And welcome to the July 3, 2025, Northampton County Council Meeting. I've asked Mr. Gofredo to lead us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we please have a moment of silence? Thank you. Mitzen, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Capora?
Here.
Mr. Giovanni?
Here.
Mr. Gofredo?
Here.
Mr. Heckman?
Here.
Ms. Keegan?
Here.
Mr. Kraft?
Here.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
All present, Mr. Brown and Mr. Heckman on the phone.
Thank you. Next, can I please have a motion to approve the minutes of June 18, 2025 meeting?
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have courtesy of the floor. No one has signed in. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to courtesy of the floor this evening? Hearing and seeing none. We have this evening a presentation from Lehigh Valley Planning Commission for our annual update on their activities. So come on down. If you want to introduce who's here for the folks that are at home.
Sure. I'm Becky Bradley, Executive Director.
And you've got to speak into the mic or they won't hear you.
Becky Bradley, Executive Director, joined by my colleague, Mr. Matt Assad, and my other colleague, Mackenzie Geisner, and my other colleague, Christian Martinez. So thanks for having us this evening. We're here to, again, give you your annual update on county planning activities. So we have a packet for you, and we're not going to go through every detail of it, but we want you to have some of the overview materials.
Help. Is our technology not working?
There we go.
Okay. Ah, there we go. Okay. You have to point it way out here. All right. So we have it set up, so I'll give you the region in context and then how Northampton County fits in that, so you have it for comparison. So last year in 2024, we did 973 total plan reviews. In addition to the plan reviews, we wrote 53 grant review and consistency letters. A lot of state agencies and some federal require us to make sure it's consistent with your county comprehensive plan when they apply for funds. And so we try to support those through that process. In addition, we look at other things like municipal ordinances and plans. We reviewed 55 of those. Those are things that the state law does not allow us to charge for. We cannot charge for either one of those activities, even if it's required. There's been a lot of activity in sewage and solid waste because of the growth. You've got to deal with the waste in order to support high quality of life. We did 62 of those reviews. I don't remember a year when we had that many. We looked at 27 traffic impact statements related to various development plans, had a subset of 173 reviews for stormwater, and those are larger type developments that are disturbing 10,000 acres, or 10,000, excuse me, 10,000 square feet or more, require a clean water review, and we work at the watershed level under Act 167 as the county planning agency. And then we did an additional 124 DEP permit reviews. So how does Northampton County fit into that? Can you help me out, Matt? Okay, yeah, good. Woo, thank you. So in Northampton County, last year, there were 521 reviews out of that, out of that total 973. 28 grant review letters for communities and different projects that they needed review and compliance reviews for. 85 stormwater reviews, 13 traffic impact statements, and then we have quite a number of solid waste and DEP permit reviews as well. And the one thing I wanted to just take a pause on is we had 39 municipal ordinances that we needed to review last year for Northampton County communities. That was a record year, and that really does mean that the local governments are taking very seriously the need to update their codes to better manage growth by and large. So then we get to 2025, and that's the next slide. So far through April of this year, there's been 196 reviews, and then you can see the rest of that in the slide for the whole region. Then when you go to Northampton County, 94 of those were for Northampton County, 20 review, review letters. We've got a bunch in right now for Pennsylvania Department of Community Economic Development's multimodal transportation program we're doing. We had 26, we've had 26 stormwater reviews so far, 13 solid waste and sewage disposal reviews, nine permit reviews for DEP, and so on on that slide. Okay. So what does that mean in context? Well, you can see on the residential side that since the early 2000s housing boom, and then you saw housing development really declined substantially there, you've started to see that pick up over the last five or so years. And that's obviously very important because our population has continued to grow, not just region-wide, but definitely in Northampton County. And then on the next slide, it shows that in context, by housing type of the region on the top, the 6,300 units, and of those, 3,519 last year were in Northampton County. That was 55% of all residential units proposed in the region that we reviewed. And there's a larger mix of housing types that are coming online and being proposed and coming online now than we've seen in previous years. So that's good news in terms of housing diversity, which means we can start to accommodate housing for a wider variety of incomes. And then in the next slide, we've got the 2025 information so far. Over 1,000 housing units reviewed region-wide, but only 375 in Northampton County through April. So we're really watching this pretty closely. Obviously, we need some more housing growth where it makes sense, where you have good sewer water, school capacity, and the like. So Kenzie's going to tell you a little bit about some housing work we're doing in that regard here in a little bit. So the non-residential in context, you can see on this slide, the Navy is industrial. It does take up the vast majority of the amount of non-residential square footage that's been proposed in the whole region since 2015, though we have seen a real sharp increase in investment by schools, in particular, in the public quasi-public area, some office here and there, and some retail. The retail's usually matched in close proximity to some of the newer housing developments. And then to the 2024 summary as it relates to the region and Northampton County, there were 6 million square feet of non-residential proposed in the county. Of that, 4,775,000 was industrial. Of that amount, 1.4 million was warehouse, storage, logistics. There was almost 400,000 square feet of commercial, almost 500,000 in transportation, parking deck, some office around 250,000 square feet, 737,000 square feet in public quasi-public, and then about 60,000 square feet in retail for the county in '24. And then '25 through April, you see that you have 943,000 square feet in total. The vast majority of that is industrial and transportation, 487,000 square feet in industrial, and the subset of 317,000 square feet in warehouse storage uses. What we have started to notice is that the market for industrial is starting to change. The companies are starting to consolidate, and the amount of land that communities have zoned for industrial-type uses is, that's available for development, has declined, or they're zoning, or zoning it to be more stringent for those types of uses to come in. So we don't expect to see those huge numbers in industrial that we've seen, that we saw in like 2020, 2021, 2023, 2024, just because communities don't have as much land zoned for that. What has been very helpful is a few years ago, working with County Executive McClure, we were able to do that Northampton County Freight Land Use Assessment and a guide for local governments. Many of them have taken that and started to amend their codes, put things in place that have really resulted in as best of industrial development as you can, given the context. Not all communities have done that, but a good number of your communities have been doing that. And that's something that I think has a measure of success to it that the county should definitely be proud of. And the last slide that I have for you is on multi-municipal planning. We have three active ones in the region right now. All of these have been adopted. The one in the middle, River Central, has communities in both Northampton and Lehigh Counties. The Northampton County communities are East Allen, North Catawbaqua, and Northampton Burrows. They adopted their multi-municipal comprehensive plan last year. They are now nearly done with a comprehensive rezoning process and official maps, which tells them, you know, where that they want to put their sewer water infrastructure, parks, community facilities. They're doing that jointly together in a collaborative process. It's going very well with the consultant that they have hired, and Jill Sites, our senior community and regional planner, has been supporting that effort as a consultant to the communities along the way. Catawbaqua Borough and Hanover Township, Lehigh County are also part of that plan. We do expect to see those coordinated zoning codes and the official map in the next 90 days or so. So that would be the first time those communities have ever not only had a joint plan, but then regulated together. The Slate Belt Plan was also adopted by all the communities that are part of that now last year, and they are about to release a request for proposals for coordinating their zoning and official maps as well. That's a very big deal. The communities up there definitely, as we know, are in the path of growth. Their growth issues are different than other places in the county and certainly to other places in Lehigh Valley. So we're continuing to provide some staff support to them as they need it to make sure that that process continues. That zoning and official map project is being supported by the Grow Norco Grant Program. So thank you for helping them then start to implement their plan. And I'm going to turn it over to Kenzie to talk a little bit more about housing.
So on June 23, we held our final event for the Housing Supply and Attainability Strategy at the Sales University. 138 people attended with representatives, representatives from several municipalities, developers, bankers, engineers, architects, and more, and many in attendance also attended both our kickoff event in February and our ULI TAP focus group sessions in March. After hearing all of the focus group discussion earlier this year, we ended up having over 250 draft strategies. And during, during June's event, we shared a handful of those high-level strategies for each community type from the rural municipalities to the cities. Where Part 1 of the Housing Strategy looked at what housing is needed, now our solution to the housing problem requires us to answer the question, where should housing go? The Region's Comprehensive Plan, Future LV, the Regional Plan, guides development across regions to areas with a key, with key factors that support it, such as utility and transportation infrastructure. Mapping the quantity of homes available, the diversity of housing types, and the price points or affordability allows us to understand the cumulative effect of, of housing diversity, affordability, and shortage, and which issues are more prevalent than others based on current growth trends. More specifically, this map helps us visualize where housing should go based on existing utility and transportation infrastructure. This Future LV map identifies sensitive lands that are not suitable for development, and it is an essential reference point for zoning strategies. We can see just how little space there is for development after factoring in preservation goals. With so much, with so little land for, with so much land preserved for agriculture and conservation, the amount of developable residential land in rural municipalities is naturally limited, creating unique housing problems. And looking forward later this summer, we will be releasing a draft plan developed alongside ULI that includes all of the detailed strategies. Thank you. And along to Christian to discuss some of our environmental initiatives.
Thank you, Kenzie. So during 2024, the LVPC prepared two significant components leading to the development of the Greater Lehigh Valley Regional Climate Action Plan, the first being the Priority Climate Action Plan, or PCAP, focused on transportation decarbonization. The goal of this plan is to reduce regional greenhouse gas emissions, and we can do so by getting people out of cars and making it easier to walk, bike, roll, or take transit, using technology to reduce congestion, promoting electric and other alternatively-fueled vehicles, and creating green infrastructure along our busiest regional highways. This plan was submitted to the U.S. EPA Environmental Protection Agency in February of 2024. And the second component was the creation of the Greater Lehigh Valley Greenhouse Gas Inventory, this being a element of the Regional Climate Action Plan itself. This was released in September of 2024. The inventory measures carbon emissions being released in Lehigh, Northampton, and then Carbon County to our north, and Warren County, New Jersey counties across seven main emission sectors. The industrial and transportation sectors account for approximately 64% of the region's emissions. Data from this plan provided the base for developing policies, goals, and reduction estimates for the Regional Climate Action Plan, which is under preparation now. These plans are being funded through the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency's Climate Pollution Reduction Grant Program. And the LVPC also initiated its ambitious Lehigh Valley Watersheds Assessment and Act 167 ordinance project to update our 15 watershed stormwater management plans and create a consistent stormwater management ordinance for all of our 62 municipalities. The implementation of the ordinance by the LVPC as part of the land use and development process will allow the region to reduce pollution in our waterways and assist our communities in meeting their municipal separate stormwater, storm sewer system, or MS4 requirements. The Lehigh Valley Watershed Assessment is expected to be a two-year process. And now it's turned over to Matt to talk about our Lehigh Valley Government Academy and our community engagement.
Thank you, Christian. We are also training the next generation of community leaders in our Lehigh Valley Government Academy. Our local government classes educated 93 appointed and officials to better understand their seats on zoning and planning and council seats. We also educated 196 local government officials and municipal road crews through our local, local technical assistant program, and we also performed 29 one-on-one tech assists in communities for transportation issues they have in the community. Those are pretty cool, actually. That's like free engineering help that you can get in your community, and we actually have the most successful tech assist program in the state. We also have our Lehigh Valley Government Academy, which brings together representatives from each municipality, school district, and legislative district in the region to discuss important issues of the community and whatever is impacting the community. In 2024, we had two general assembly meetings that covered areas like transportation, housing, and we also had a presentation by Governor Josh Shapiro's Office of Critical Investments. Obviously, you've seen tonight, we do a lot. So we forged partnerships with mass media so that we can get it to as many people as possible. We have a column in The Morning Call. We have a radio show on the NPR station in Bethlehem, WDII. We also, a lot of the development statistics you see, we do a monthly snapshot, and that goes in the Lehigh Valley Business Journal. And that's in addition to our website, which is pretty active, and we have more than 7,000 followers on Facebook, LinkedIn, Instagram, and X. And then every once in a while, we kind of take the show on the road. Staff has provided keynote presentations, moderated or sat on panel discussions, or helped organize dozens of events across the region, state, and in some cases, the nation in 2024. And lastly, we did have some reasons to celebrate. We, I know, we're going to brag a little. We, the LVPC was awarded a 2024 Innovation and Collaboration Award during the Water Resources Association Gala in September in Philadelphia. That was for our sort of history of, of environmental protection, and specifically for that Priority Climate Action Plan that Christian talked about. Earlier this month, Kenzie and Jill Sites won a National Association of Regional Council's Award for an amazing data dashboard they did with the housing supply project. That dashboard is already being copied by regions across the country. They saw what, they demonstrated, and they said, yeah, we want to do that. How do we do that? So there's already some regions already copying it. And we said, yeah, rip us off. We want to help wherever we can. And if you're curious about where it is, it's lvpc.org/housing, and you could, I could spend like a half an afternoon on that thing. It's pretty cool. I'm going to turn it back to Becky to sort of look ahead a little bit.
Thanks, Matt. So got to keep bragging a little bit on the housing dashboard. It was the first one that, that Kenzie ever made, and she figured out how to put it together using Reddit and a lot of hard work. So she's, she's like, shut up, Becky, but she's amazing. Anyway, you can search any community in the Lehigh Valley and see what their housing needs are today. Is it affordable based on your profession? If you continue to grow at the same rate that you've been growing over the last 20 years, will you have enough in the next 20 years, 30 years? So it's a pretty cool thing. So we do a lot of planning, as you're aware, and we have been looking ahead at what's next. And some of the things that we're doing this year include electric vehicle infrastructure community use case study. We did that in partnership with the U.S. Department of Transportation and PENDOT. That was just adopted by the Lehigh Valley Transportation Study in the middle of June. And so that prioritizes locations where you should have more access to different types of alternative fueling. So things like parking decks, things like transit facilities, actual gas stations. In fact, every gas station proposal we've reviewed in the last three to four years now is already being built to be set up for hybrid fueling. And what I mean by hybrid fueling is traditional gasoline of various forms, plus they see it as a business opportunity to start charging for electric vehicles. So we are about to release an RFP in partnership with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. We call it the What to Do with 22. That is a huge priority for the LVTS in figuring out what are the current maintenance needs on 22 now? How do we plan for the future? Where is it the most congested? How can we relieve that congestion and come up with a prioritized list so we can pick off one project at a time using the limited resources that we have into the Lehigh Valley? We're going through a road reclassification system process right now. That is a really nerdy term for if the amount of traffic on your road increases, it affects what speed limits you can set, what federal funding is available to go into the roadways. So obviously, traffic's increased a lot in the last decade, so it's time to do that reclassification. We have the analysis done, and we're meeting with PENDOT in just a couple of weeks, which is the next required step in the process, and then eventually over with the Federal Highway Administration to get those reclassifications done, which should help bring more resources into the Lehigh Valley. We recently applied for a Safe Streets for All Grant to the U.S. Department of Transportation for a regional transportation safety plan. The amount of vehicle-to-vehicle collisions, vehicle-to-people collisions, it's terrible what's happening out on the region's roads. Looking at those priority locations, talking to local governments about, sure, we saw that there were this many crashes reported in this location, but what are those locations where people aren't reporting crashes? What types of projects do you think that you need so we can start to get those in a plan, that we can start to move those into the long-range transportation plan, which is the federally required funding mechanism to help make the change? We are knee-deep in writing an organizational strategic plan. We are going to be launching a complete e-plan, online electronic plan submission portal and review portal here in probably about three months, set to do a soft launch in September. We're overhauling our website and our data access portal because we figured out there's some really cool ways, like the dashboard that Kenzie has been working on for housing, that will allow us to be more accessible to our community. And right now, we're in the process of working with the county on bridge projects, PENDOT, some local governments on investing about $160 million worth of federal and state funds through the Transportation Improvement Program into the region's roads, bridges, as well as Lanta and some small bike pad projects. Christian and Evan are about to kick off the region's trail gap analysis. We do this in partnership with the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources here in Pennsylvania and Lehigh Valley Greenways. That helps DCNR prioritize locations for the closed trail gaps when people apply to their conservation and partnership program. Christian told you about the Act 167 project, the land use guide that we did for you guys on freight several years ago. Lehigh County is having us do the same. Not only do we do the Priority Climate Action Plan on transportation decarbonization, but the U.S. Department of Environmental Protection and the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection are working alongside us on a regional climate action plan that includes other sectors beyond transportation. That is being drafted now, and we're hoping to have that out in August, September timeframe. You heard about the housing supply, the Lehigh Valley Government Academy. During the General Assembly, we do those twice a year, as Matt mentioned, we ask in one of those, what communities do you need? They came back to us with a list, and one of those needs is training on what happens when a development comes in? How do I predict what the transportation impact's going to be? So we're developing some coordinated training sessions with them so they can get that education, resources they need. And another one that is in development now that we're hoping to do early next year is how to address, people just call them data centers, but a data center could be a Bitcoin mining operation, or it could be supporting a major AI or other advanced manufacturing. So we need to get good information out to our local governments on that, and we're starting to build the partnerships with local governments to be able to build that training program. We do population and employment projections every four years. This is the year that they need to be done in order to meet U.S. Department of Transportation requirements. So we have actually built in an in-house tool. We have the capability, and technology has allowed us to do that now, which will allow us to have very accurate projections down to the municipal level. They were less accurate under prior software packages. So we were transitioning from outloaded technology to newer technology so we can get more accurate and more detailed information out to everybody, which then we can bookmark the housing needs and environmental needs and to start to update the regional plan. And then lastly, this region is the only region without a U.S. Department of Economic, or the U.S. Economic Development Administration Community Economic Development Strategy. We're the Regional Community Development Agency, LVDC, is a regional economic development corporation. We used to do these things called SEDS plans. They're much more targeted than, let's say, a regional plan where you have all of the different balances of uses, or like LVDC's new strategic plan, which I know you heard about a few weeks ago. They've got some targeted sectors that they want to bring in. It's where you put those two things together and say, hey, where can these things actually go? And so it's a much more streamlined strategy, and it opens up tons of funding to then go into either properties like brownfields, or even to go into sewer and water systems to then support growth where it makes sense in accordance with these adopted regional strategies. So that's what we're working on right now. And I think that concludes our presentation. If you have any questions?
Thank you. Does anyone have questions? It's a lot to take in.
Yeah, sorry.
I have two questions. I'll ask the silly one first, but it's not really. Are we ever getting a train, or am I going to die without one in the Lehigh Valley?
Oh, if I was getting a PhD, I could write a thesis.
You keep voting it down. That's why I'm going to die without one. That's why I'm going to die without one.
So that's a complicated question.
Well, because some people talk about it favorably and others don't. So I'll ask it more. So like, where is it?
Because... Sure. We look at it neutrally because the law requires us to, right? And the Lehigh Valley Transportation Study worked with PennDOT last year to do a Phase One. That's, all passenger rail systems in America require you to go through this federally-defined process. So the Phase One is kind of an investigatory phase, and it basically requires you to outline their process in context of your region. So PennDOT was gracious enough to pay for that study, give us a consultant. We heard all about it. Then we find out as part of that study, our next action is the Phase Two. Phase Two is about $450,000, and we would have to come up with the funding for that. Now, wild card, new administration comes in in January. We are unclear whether we will be able to work towards getting in the Corridor ID Program, which is the Federal Rail Administration's formal program to start working towards passenger rail at this time. We will know more. We just have to wait. Once I think we have that information, we'll have a better sense on whether we can go through or it makes sense to go through with the Phase Two. But the Phase Two identifies the route, and you're required to look at all different types of routes. You can actually look at the Phase One. It tells you all this stuff. It's on our website at lvpc.org. So the consultant was required to look at existing rail lines. So they identified the route, the Norfolk Southern Route into New Jersey, and then they identified a potential former route down to Philadelphia through the Sawkins. And then you have to look at the connection between the Lehigh Valley and Redding as well. So we would have to go through a formal federal process that they drive on which of those routes would be the preferred route. Then we would have to go through the process of identifying an operator, talking about revenue guarantees and other things. Every passenger rail project in Pennsylvania requires the state legislature to do a revenue guarantee. And we understand the situation. We've all seen it in the news with transit funding at the state level right now. So it's very important that we all know what the opportunity is, as well as the constraints, because you can never create a path forward without understanding those things. I encourage everyone to look at that Phase One strategy. And the best we can do right now is to wait it out and see what comes through the Federal Rail Administration. If, the trick of all of this is, is if the Federal Rail Administration does open up the Corridor ID Program, we will have a very short turnaround to put in that application. And that means we also have to have a guarantee of funds, which is going to be estimated from the PennDOT consultant around $400,000. So if we need $400,000, we cannot take it out of our current Transportation Improvement Program. We've got to find and raise the money somewhere, and we'll have to do it very quickly. So that is the one real challenge about this conversation. We will need money. How do we go about getting it? You know, that's up for discussion for sure.
And then I have a second question, but I don't know, Mr. Warren may want to piggyback on it. So when I look at the different kinds of housing that's available, or the residential, like what we have and what's proposed, I don't see anything regarding the manufactured homes. And I know when I travel to different parts of the state, I see a lot more of them available elsewhere. So I wonder if that's even being considered in the Lehigh Valley, what kind of places it would need? And maybe that's an hour-long conversation that I won't ask you to answer fully, but just out of curiosity, because he's pushed a lot of that effort. And when I travel, I see them. I see where they're manufactured, and I see them being available for most folks. So is there a movement for that at all in the valley?
Oh, absolutely.
Because I see the numbers are townhouses. I see the numbers are apartment buildings. We see the large urban apartments, but what about elsewhere?
Sure. And these, again, these numbers are developments proposed by the private sector, right? One of the things that we're trying to do with our Regional Supply and Attainability Strategy is talk about other forms of housing that we could support here, and manufactured homes is definitely one of those. There are some really cool products that you can even buy on Amazon, like right now from your phone, sitting right here, that are acceptable housing types, especially for people that are starting out or maybe don't have a lot of money. And you can accommodate those here. People just are not choosing to do it yet, and it's a little curious as why. We actually started asking that in some of our, on our technical assistance panel led by the Urban Land Institute's To Williger Center for Housing, with all of the professional developers and the banking community, affordable housing community. We had a whole bunch of us sitting down brainstorming. We do know they're harder to finance if people need some financing for them. A lot of the issues is people don't, if they want to buy one, they have to have a place to put it. And finding locations to put it that they can get the utility hookup is a challenge. So what are opportunities to clear some of those hurdles for people? And I think that's part of the ideas and the conversations that came out of those discussions that you'll see here coming out in the next couple of months, in the 200-and-some-odd recommendations we got from folks. Thank you. Anyone else?
Just to piggyback off what Ms. Vargo Hefner was just saying, it's my hope that at our Economic Development Committee meeting, at some point in the future, we'll be able to bring you back to really dive into the housing aspects of what the committee's been talking about as of late, and to get a more detailed overview of the housing plan with the ULI that was, you know, recently presented, what's on your website as well. I think it's important for us to talk about that in more detail and understand and know what's in there so that we can start planning for the future as well.
Yeah, happy to come back. Again, we're still working with ULI right now to draft the plan. We are right now calculating tax impacts, too. That was one of the big questions that came out of those technical assistance panels. We just recently got a whole group of tax information just last week, so we're going to run that, run that and see what that actually looks like. I don't know if there's myths, legends, or truths in some of it, and so the data will tell us, right? And we'll unpack that. So we're hoping to add that in, too.
Any other questions? Thank you for coming out on Fourth of July Eve. We appreciate everything that you do, and thank you for the update.
Yep, thank you.
Next, we have County Executive Report. Mr. McClure, do you have a report for us this evening?
May I suggest an executive session to discuss personnel and legal issues?
Need a motion? Second?
Second.
Call for the vote?
Mr. Giovanni?
No.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Capora?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of seven to two.
Okay, we'll go. What's, it's 7:08, and I'll be taking my phone to get Mr. Heckman on.
No, no.
Hey, Tom, you can stay out here since you voted no. You don't have to.
Yeah.
That all?